Good evening and welcome to the Grand Prairie City Council Meeting for April 23rd, 2018. I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing "Oh, Canada." [Music] our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir alumni for the audio. We'll move on to the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. Can I have a motion for that set of minutes, please? Councillor Thiessen.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council receive the minutes of the city council meeting held Monday, April 9th, 2018 as presented.
Thanks very much, Councillor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Any errors or omissions we need to correct? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. I'm doing my math here. We've got a couple of council members. Okay, yep, that's right. That motion carries and we'll move on to the adoption of the agenda. Councillor Minhaus.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council adopt the agenda as presented.
Thanks very much, Councillor Minhaus. Any discussion or debate on the agenda? Again, seeing nobody ringing in, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well and that brings us to the delegation portion of our agenda. An opportunity for anybody in the community to come forward, address council on any community-related matter. We have a couple of delegations that let us know ahead of time that they were going to be here. First is a delegation from the 2018 Alberta Summer Games. I see Ms. McNeil is in the audience and she's the only one on the agenda. Mr. Robbins, I'm sorry, you're gonna have to say... No, no, no. I'll invite Lionel Robbins and Lindsay McNeil from the Alberta Summer Games Host Society to come forward. Welcome to you both.
So, we're here for our check-in. Give you an update, we're officially just under three months out from the games, so our plan is probably to attend every second meeting for a few minutes each time, just to give you updates as we get closer. Three months from today, our games will have officially closed, so we're under three months. All of our large-scale team meetings have been going well. We've been meeting monthly and now we're accelerating those. And everything's coming into sync. We have all the communities all engaged and on board. To date, we have raised $250,000 in committed sponsorship cash and an additional $250,000 in gift and kind. We don't have the budget in front of us, but that's approximately $185,000 over budget for our fundraising efforts, so happy to say our legacy fund is growing quite nicely. We had our 100-day-out barbecue where we raised another $900, just in that event. We have a 50-day barbecue being planned for May 26th. I'll give the information. I believe it's May 26th. We also have our lotteries going quite well. For those that haven't seen it around, we have a 1963 T-Bird being raffled off as another fundraiser for the games that was actually outside of the budget as well, so that's adding to our legacy fund. And in just a few short weeks, we're already halfway to break-even point with lots of time to go. And with a sellout, we would be approximately $65,000, $70,000 of additional funds raised from that. The Games gear is now available on the online store. The RFP was awarded to earnings, so you can go onto the online store through the Games website and start ordering your paraphernalia and Games gear. And to date, we have over 400 volunteers recruited, and while that sounds impressive, that leaves us about 1,200 short. So, we know it's a last-minute town, so we're in aggressive volunteer mode. And I know some of our esteemed councillors have already signed up for volunteering. We recently had a nice run on ambassadors, which are really important volunteer positions because they require a lot more training, they're gonna be kind of our eyes and ears. They're like our white hat people at the Calgary Airport kind of idea. They will have special hats, too, that they get. And we're looking for a lot of general volunteers, just the whole Friday, Saturday, Sunday, working out of the venues. So, we're just kinda hoping to count on everybody to really push that through and lots of signs up and lots of information, and we're just in recruitment mode for the next three months. The only other item I had was a thank you from the Community Living Committee. Gave us a little bit of leeway for the legacy funds to look at some facility improvements before the games. So, as opposed to using legacy money after all the crowd has come and gone, we actually can improve some of the facilities to be enjoyed during the games. And we had some approvals just recently come through from that. Thank you, Bob, for the... Both the volleyball beach courts are undergoing a full renovation and will be fantastic when they're done. And I'm happy to say that even though we had approval to use legacy funds, we did then get the grant we had applied for approved, so we will likely not need a lot of the money. And we just had an approval for a new hammer throw cage at the athletic field at Legion Field, which is a big part of the games and then will also allow us to host provincial-type athletic events that we previously had not been allowed to. And looking for more opportunities for that as well.
Thanks very much for the presentation, Mr. Robbins. Were there any questions for the delegation? I don't see anybody in the queue. I don't know if there's anything else that you wanted to add. It's funny, Lindsay's name is the one on the agenda.
She writes the notes.
You just did the booking. Yeah, we know who wrote all that.
That's right, exactly, yeah.
Actually, I see Councillor O'Toole has a question.
Hi. I just got a little PR for you. I've got these, I handed them out to all the councillors, so if they're interested in supporting the games by sponsoring, or supporting by volunteering, then there's everything you need to know is right here.
And we do owe Councillor O'Toole a big thank you for joining our Food Services Committee, so he has taken on a large role of managing one of the food centers, I believe, is what you signed up for.
They really haven't let me know. They just told me it's a big job.
Now you know.
Well, that's a great commitment and wouldn't expect any less from Councillor O'Toole. Just looking at the sheet that you handed out, so I see the website is 2018asg.ca/volunteer. So, 2018asg.ca/volunteer. So, that's a pretty easy one to remember.
Yep.
Great. Well, thanks very much for being here to provide an update. It's great to hear that things are going well. We'll try and help get the word out about volunteering for the games. It's gonna be a fantastic opportunity to host the province here in the community, and thanks so much for making a commitment to come and see us on a regular basis, give us updates.
No problem. Thank you.
Okay, we'll call our next delegation that let us know ahead of time, Ms. Marissa Hetland with respect to the ban of single-use plastic shopping bags.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Welcome.
I'd like to start with a question. Why are you all sitting in your chairs this evening in your seats? I know it's not the crazy amounts of power. I know it's not the crazy amounts of money. I know it's not the crazy amounts of fame that you get in your position. I know you and I know your hearts. And I know the reason you're sitting here this evening, I didn't know I'm getting emotional over this, is because you care about the well-being of the people in the city and of this region. And not only the people of today, but the people that you're making decisions for in the future. You all have vision and that is why you are here, sitting in those seats. Tonight, I entreat you to consider these future residents and consider creating a single-use plastic bag ban for the city. One that will reduce garbage in the landfills. And I know existing already, the city and collective council does have a forward-thinking environmental mindset, and this is in alignment with that. Single-use plastic bags are a problem. Between 500 billion and 1 trillion plastic bags are used worldwide each year. Our ocean is full of plastic. I don't know if any of you have heard this, but we have enormous islands floating in our oceans, mostly comprised of plastic. And there used to be six and now there are five because two of the enormous islands of garbage have grown so much they've joined together. Plastic is a problem because every piece of plastic that has been made cannot be unmade. And single-use plastic bags are something that is used very much in the city. Other parts of the world have banned them, other countries, places within our country as well, and even a municipality in our province. Plastic bags take more than 400 years to break down. If a single-use bag ban were to be implemented here, the amount of bags dumped into the landfill potentially could reduce 1 million units of single-use plastic bags going into our landfill. Also, the recycling load would be reduced. And it's anyone's guess what China is going to do with what they're going to accept on that topic as far as what they're going to accept for recyclables. A single-use shopping bag is called a single-use shopping bag because it's intended to be made, used once, and then disposed of. I'm asking you today to consider banning single-use plastic shopping bags. A plastic bag ban is not a new idea and that is a positive thing. The wheel does not need to be reinvented. You should have a copy of the municipality of Wood Buffalo has something similar to what I am suggesting this evening. This means that drafting legislation for a bylaw would be somewhat simplified. You could take this and make it fit for here. Imagine a city with no plastic bags blowing around in the wind, caught up in the fences, clogging up Bear Creek. Imagine a future Grand Prairie looking back on decisions made by you sitting in those seats. A thoughtful and insightful decision, taking steps to improve the quality of life for future generations. I know why you're sitting in those seats. Please consider creating a single-use plastic bag ban for Grand Prairie.
Ms. Hetland, thanks very much for the presentation. Any questions for the delegation? I think all members of council received a copy of the Wood Buffalo bylaw that you shared. Thank you very much. I see councillor, a few council members in the queue. Councillor Blackburn.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Thank you, Marissa, for your presentation. Just one question, your reference here is to plastic bags only, and I see that the bylaw in Wood Buffalo also includes single-use paper bags. Is there a reason why you only are considering plastic at this time?
Yes. And thank you for asking this. I do believe that it should be only plastic as the amount. We live in a wood-and-paper-rich country, region, province, and the amount of time it does take for paper to break down is way significantly less. And as far as the issues that this bylaw had, they had to be drafted, and I think that would mitigate all of those issues because there are kind of existing legislation, I don't know if it's provincial or national, but liquor stores and pharmacies, and there's a few other things where it's kind of illegal not to have some kind of packaging for privacy reasons and whatnot, so it really didn't really make a lot of sense to me why they banned every single-use because the amount of impact that paper is much, much less. And also, paper bags are compostable, which you cannot ever say about plastics, so...
Thank you for that.
I see Councillor O'Toole.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you for being here today. I've been to Fort McMurray, Wood Buffalo area, and I went and bought a whole bunch of groceries and I ended up spending about $20 in box bags because I did not realize that there was a single-use ban on plastic bags. With that being said, how long did the process take to go through there and how long has they been involved with the single ban?
I believe the redraft was 2012. I should really have this in front of me and there must be a year on here, maybe somewhere. This is the original, I believe, very end. Okay, so this would have been... Okay. And I believe there was a, they had to amend, make some amendments, is that the right terminology? Later on, because of the issues with takeout food, which, like I said, mean paper bags kind of fill that gap, as well as Councillor O'Toole had mentioned, many people, especially in the city, do their shopping from other places and not always are prepared. It's not just like running home, they're driving an hour or two or possibly more. Sometimes people come from Fairview and stuff like that, so... And also, to me, the paper is also a good option because a lot of reusable bags are made out of plastic. And many people, this was a really strong point in the opposition of this bylaw in Wood Buffalo, was people would purchase the reusable bags and throw them out. So, if they are having the option of having, purchasing, or getting a paper bag and they throw it out, the environmental impact is much, much less.
Just speaking of being opposed to some of this, what was the relationship with the residents of Fort McMurray, Wood Buffalo, to this ban? Like, were they quite upset or were they... Was it something that they accepted without, no issues?
So, this bylaw in Wood Buffalo was initiated by a gentleman who was high school age, and throughout the process, he kind of, well, obviously became an adult because I think he was 17 at the inception of bringing this forth. And he created a, I believe it was a petition, and it did seem like there was a lot of support. I think the backlash was probably a lot of the issues that kind of arose from including the paper as well, in my opinion. And I proposed being the age that I am and reversing it because this was a young fellow that came in and he's a youth and represents what the future, when you look at environmental policies such as this, are made for. And that was a really great initiative, but then that municipality turned around and then they kind of polled the adults. And to me, I'm standing here, sitting here as an adult, saying this needs to be something to engage the youth. And grade six and up, I think all the kids in Grand Prairie should be polled and asked what they think of this because this is really something that will affect them.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Councillor O'Toole. I don't see anybody... Oh, Councillor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Sorry about being so late to the dance there. Thanks for coming in and for this presentation, Marissa. I really appreciate it. My question to you is, because I'm all for the ban of plastic bags and my vote would go that way if this council chose to take that in time, but my question to you is, it came to my head when Councillor O'Toole said, oh, he went to the grocery store and paid $20 in reusable bags. Now, there's low-income families everywhere. What would you say to the low-income family who may be opposed to, you know, getting a free garbage bag slash, like, grocery bag? Because for a lot of people, it's not just, it's not just a single-use, it's a double-use. You throw it out in your trash and then it doesn't biodegrade in the dump, right? But if they have to buy their disposable plastic bags and also the reusable bags for their garbage and stuff, what would you say to that type of pushback? Because if there's gonna be any, we might see that from that segment of our society.
Well, I have a two-part response to that. When you visit certain stores in Grand Prairie, you are charged. And to me, that is kind of unfair on a few levels. That money does not go towards anything environmental, even though the store will tell you that it's an environmental deterrent for people not reusing bags and bringing their own. And that also is, I would say, a financial nickeling and diming away the common person who maybe can't afford an extra $100 over a year or whatever it does add up to be. And I believe that paper bags can be used for lining a trash can and they certainly could have a little bit of that, kind of, fill that role. People just are, we're so used to using the plastic. How many years ago, I think it was, I can't really speak to exactly how long ago plastic turned around, but, you know, there was a point where we didn't have plastic bags and people managed okay. Certainly, I mean, it may be an issue with the cost in the end because I really couldn't tell you, but my assumption is that, you know, any bag costs the store money and it's possible that paper may cost more and there may be that fee. But as far as there could be initiatives to have reduced cost on the reusable bags and things such as that, that's really all I can offer.
No, that's okay. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Councillor Thiessen. Anyone else with questions for the delegation? Not seeing anybody ringing in. Thanks very much, Ms. Hetland. We deal with our committee, or sorry, our delegation business towards the end of our agenda, which you might know, and so council will consider your presentation at that point. Thank you very much. Thanks for being here this evening. Was there anybody else that wished to come forward this evening to address council? Is there anybody else that wished to come forward this evening to address council? If not, I'll say that this opportunity exists at every regular city council meeting. We'll move on to item number six, public hearings, of which we have none this evening. And we have no items of unfinished business carrying over from last council meeting. So, we'll move into reports and item 8.1, the Tri-Municipal Industrial Partnership Memorandum of Agreement. I'll look to our city manager for a brief introduction.
Thank you, Your Worship. Brian Glavine from Economic Development is here as well in case there are any detailed questions on the report. I'm pleased to bring this one forward. It was back in June of 2017 that the council considered the very generous offer from the municipal district to share in the revenues associated with major industrial development that might occur within a prescribed area in the MD. That motion was approved in 2017, a budget appropriation of approximately $52,500 was approved by council to get things going. The terms of reference that had been developed by the steering committee was approved by council, as was a vision statement. And the work that has occurred since June of 2017 has now given rise to this memorandum of agreement between the parties. It essentially codifies what we had anticipated and envisaged in that terms of reference and in the work that's being done between the three municipalities. So, I offer it up for council's consideration today.
Thanks very much, Mr. City Manager. Just from the council perspective, this has gone through a pretty rigorous review at the committee level. I guess I'm the only committee representative that's here today. Councillor Plott and Councillor Clayton were the others that would have seen it, but it's gone through committee and management a couple of times to make sure that all the language is appropriate, and I believe our city solicitors had an opportunity to review it from the city perspective as well. So, I just offer that to the council members, and so I would look for a motion with respect to the Tri-Municipal Industrial Partnership Memorandum of Agreement. Can I get a motion? Councillor Minhaus, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I will move that motion.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councillor Minhaus. Motion to adopt the Tri-Municipal Industrial Partnership Memorandum of Agreement, sorry, to approve as presented. Any discussion or debate? Councillor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm just curious, I saw on the report, I'm not sure if it's finding the exact wording right now, but that part of this is to pave the way for forming an official entity to govern this. Is there an anticipated timeline or hopeful timeline on that?
Sure. Well, I'm looking at the two management team members there and I'm happy to take that. The most recent discussion is that at the committee level, we are trying to identify what would be the appropriate corporate entity or corporate structure for the different phases of the project. At this early phase, it appears that it may be more of a marketing approach, which may need a different legal structure than a approach that may or may not hold land. And so, I think it's likely to change over time, I guess would be the answer. And that would be the other thing that I'd apply to the entire memorandum of agreement. I think there's a general recognition that things can change and there's an openness from the MD of green view if the area changes slightly because some lands are identified as more appropriate or less appropriate for development. That's something we may see, but specifically around the legal entity, it's likely that that's something that you would see an evolution in.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And our next one, item up, I think, is also gonna be our city manager introducing item 8.2, the Council Strategic Plan. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Your Worship. And our chief financial officer and director of corporate services has done extensive work on this and we'll get into any level of detail that council wishes on the process. This is a very familiar document to council. It is actually council's document, and the purpose of my introducing it is simply to get it on the floor. It does represent a very, very important document from the organization's perspective. It will feed into all of the business planning and budgeting and the structuring of initiatives that occur throughout the term of the strategy. It is intended to last more than a year and up until the point where the strategy is not as relevant as council feels it should be, at which time they would amend it. It is intended to be a living document, Your Worship, so the process of using it as the years go on is one that does anticipate refining the language, but it's also very important that the language be as precise as council needs it to be today. So, it's brought forward for council's consideration as well.
Okay. Thanks very much, Mr. City Manager. Can I have a, before we get into discussion, can I have a motion to adopt or approve the strategic plan as presented? Councillor Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I will move that council adopt the strategic plan as presented for 2019 to 2022.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councillor Blackburn. So, open for discussion and debate. Councillor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Given. First of all, I want to say how impressed I am by this plan. We had nine very different people get in a room with very different ideas and I thought it was bad-taking my two kids shopping and all the things they want to do while nine of us in a room is a lot more challenging than that, so I am so impressed that we got something coherent out of this. Never mind something coherent that I really feel does capture the intent that we as a group see this community wanting. So, I'm impressed by the work, something that was, it just was, had all these ideas of words I hope made it in, sentences that I hope made it in, and as I was going through the plan, I remember just crossed those, I would be like, wow, there's something so much better there, something so much better there, something so much better there. So, I'm so impressed by this plan. That being said, there is one particular phrase that I think is important to be in here and I'm hesitant to bring it up because I don't think that we want to be wordsmithing this plan because a lot of work has gone into wordsmithing it already, and I don't want to open it up and say, hey, let's phrase that differently, let's phrase that differently, let's phrase that differently, because this plan isn't about the words on paper, it's about the actions that come out of it. And even when we quibble with words, for the most part, the actions that we're hoping to get are gonna come out of it. That being said, there is something I think should be in the plan because just having it in its plan itself is an action, and that is talking about our indigenous community. It's 10%, of our population self-identifies as indigenous, so it's a big constituency. big constituency. We're on Treaty Eight territory, so it's an important part of our culture and history. It's also thirty percent of our homeless population identifies as indigenous. So there's clearly work we need to do making inroads with this community. So I really think it's important that we've got an overt mention to, mention to, to this community in our strategic plan. As I'm, as I hear about the things that administration and council are up to, should bring about truth and reconciliation, I'm really excited about the actions. I know that whether or not we change the strategic plan, actions that are good for us as Grand Prairie and good for our indigenous neighbors are going to take part whether or not we change the words in this plan, but I do think it is important to have words in there. So I'm going to move that in culture, under point three, if you look at the details, there's point three, I'm going to move that we change that to honors our indigenous community, other cultures, and the diversity of Grand Prairie and the region through the development of initiatives to promote inclusiveness and pride in our community.
Okay. Okay. Thanks very much, councillor Bressi. So a motion to offer a specific amendment to a specific objective, that motion is in order and open for discussion and debate. Discussion, debate on councillor Bressi's motion. Councillor Friesen.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Thank you, councillor Bressi, for making that amendment, that motion for amendment to the wording. I agree that we shouldn't be wordsmithing, but I do remember the discussion around this in Jasper and it was such that just if we say that we honor all cultures and the diversity, that should be enough. And I remember believing in that and feeling like that would be good enough in Jasper. And I was very wrong, though. And I've been to three truth and reconciliation events since then. Our facility that my husband and I own have hosted smudging and we've hosted a wake since then. And I readily admit that that isn't good enough just to say all cultures without honoring the rich indigenous history of our Cree, Dene, Métis, and Beaver friends who settled and made this land habitable and, and I really like what you've done. I'll be supporting that amendment to this. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Friesen. Any other discussion or debate? Councillor O'Toole?
Thank you very much. I, I'm kind of disappointed. I thought we made a, a, a decision when we were in our, our council retreat. I do understand the importance of indigenous community. I'm not second guessing that. It's just that I thought when we mentioned cultural diversity, it included all cultures and not putting one ahead of the other. And that's just where I'm sitting at right now. Yes, we do have a strong Métis community here. We do definitely have a strong Cree and, and Beaver community here as well. And we also have a strong Ukrainian community in the area as well. And so I just, kind of hard to change my mind on this one, so thank you.
Thanks, councillor O'Toole. I'll, I see councillor Thieson in the queue, I'll just pop in to say that I'll support the amendment. I, I also wouldn't get into wordsmithing, but I think there's a very specific intent behind this and a specific purpose that is, is missing from the document otherwise. And so I would support this motion. And it is a living document, it is council's document and as council members have every opportunity until the last, until it's adopted, and even after it's adopted, you know, as we review it from time to time, we have an opportunity to change it. And that's the latitude that we have council, as council members. And so until it's a motion of council adopting it, it isn't complete. And so this, that opportunity exists here tonight and I'm supportive of the intent in the motion. Councillor Thieson?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Not opposed to your, to your motion here, but I'm going to challenge you a little bit because I was challenged when, when it came time to put back in like our regional air and water and I see that in the document here. And so I appreciate administration's work to that and council, you know, adhering to my big fight. So this is a little fight, but my, my challenge to you is that councillor Bressi is, in three points in the document, there's reference to under community about inclusion, about honoring our cultural diversity and community pride, and also one under governance that says establishes and maintains constructive relations with other governing authorities in the region, including municipalities, First Nations, and school boards. So do you think that with this addition, that it's going to significantly change our relationship with our, with our First Nations people in our community and improve this document? Or is it just something that we're just throwing in an extra word to say, okay, well, culture is everything, but we're going to separate the indigenous? And so my question to you is, do you feel like by adding this indigenous, it won't separate our indigenous people from, from other cultures? And in saying that, is it still, do you feel like it needs to be overtly recognized even though in three different areas, we are very casually recognizing all cultures?
Councillor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Given, and thank you councillor Thieson. That's, it's a, it's a very great question. I think it's important to talk to, talk about it. And I think something that's important to recognize is words without actions in this case are not just useless, they're actually damaging. And for me, this isn't about words and a plan. The, the important thing is the actions we take as a community for truth and reconciliation and, and inclusion of all communities and honoring and learning from all, from all cultures. So the actions that come out of this document are more important than the words. And I am confident whether or not we make these changes to the words, that our administration, us as a council are going to continue to work, to work with our indigenous community. That being said, sometimes words are important too. And we are treaty people, we live on treaty territory. And I think that it is worth recognizing that. And that, that is words that mean a whole lot more than just the words on a piece of paper. And, but still, words are important. So yeah, I do think it is important to get words here. I also would point out, just as we talked about, well, what about other cultures? And why, and why not just wrap them all up in one? That in 2013, the city signed an agreement with the Grand Prairie Aboriginal Circle of Services that said that we would strengthen the relationship between the municipality and the community's Aboriginal people. And so we've already recognized as a city that there is something different here and that this, and yeah, so we've already made that recognition. And I think it's worth recognizing that overtly in our strategic plan.
Thanks, councillor Bressi. If I can, I'll just supplement that with my own perspective. The point about us being treaty people is a hundred percent true and, and sometimes I think the context of that is missed. The land in which the corporate municipality, the corporate entity of the municipality of Grand Prairie sits on was at one point Crown land. And the Crown has title to that land in any sort of legal sense that we can imagine because of the treaties that were signed with the indigenous people that were living here at the time. That may be a flawed process, but if we want to wrap our heads around the fact that we're a corporate entity that is a subject of the province and the province is often referred to as the Crown. The Crown that creates municipalities has signed an agreement with the indigenous people that were living on this land that our community exists on today. And I think that's one very, very good reason that has a legal basis of why this culture would be recognized in a different way than others. I think there's a legal foundation to that as well. Any other discussion or debate? Councillor Friesen?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would just add to that, that in the recommendations by the Truth and Reconciliation Commission, there are a number specifically for municipal government levels. So there's, there's church recommendations, there are federal recommendations, there's provincial recommendations, there are school board recommendations, and there are municipal government recommendations. Nowhere else have I seen over a hundred recommendations in one place for the Ukrainian community that you, that in order to foster these relationships, here's what you do for the Ukrainian community. In order to foster these relationships, here's what you do to any other communities. So I think to, to councillor O'Toole's point, there is something different about, about the indigenous community that doesn't exist with the other communities that have moved into Canada. We moved into their territory. Other immigrants have moved in since then. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Friesen. Councillor Thieson?
Yeah. Thank you very much. I appreciate everybody chipping in on this one. It's something that I'm also very passionate about. My hope is, whether, and my belief is actually, is whether or not included in this document, I believe our deeds as a corporate entity with our indigenous community will be more important than those, those words that we put on a piece of paper. So I have utmost faith in our administration and in this council that whether or not it's in our strategic plan, our people of the treaty lands will be recognized. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Thieson. I don't see anybody else in the queue. So if we're ready, we'll call for the vote on councillor Bressi's amendment. So we'll call for the vote on councillor Bressi's amendment to the main motion. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. So we'll move on to discussion and debate on councillor Blackburn's main motion. Any discussion or debate on the main motion to adopt the strategic plan 2019 to 2022? Seeing nobody ringing in, I will call for the vote. Please vote. That motion carries unanimously. Thanks very much to our management team for all the work that's gone into getting council to this point. I know Ms. Walker and a team of others have worked very hard to get us to this point and will continue to work hard to implement the priority-based budgeting process that this document will inform. So thank you very much for all the work, management. So we'll move on to nine point one, the Community Living Committee meeting from Tuesday, April 10th. Councillor Thieson, I think that's your set of minutes?
That is my set of minutes, Mayor Given. Thank you very much. I would move that council receive the minutes of the Community Living Committee meeting held Tuesday, April 10th, 2018 as presented.
Thanks very much, councillor Thieson. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Are there any errors or omissions that we need to correct? Seeing nobody ringing in, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Thieson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. We had two items, two motions coming out of committee. The first one involving the 2018 Alberta Summer Games and I would move that council approve utilizing anticipated Alberta Summer Games legacy funds to make proactive facility improvements in advance of the 2018 Alberta Summer Games. And further, direct administration work with the Summer Games Committee to identify appropriate facility improvements for funding. Just speaking to this motion, I don't know if I have to, I think our delegation already spoke to it. We, we'll see through this, these legacy funds, the renovation of the volleyball courts down at South Bear Creek. Well, they'll have a new configuration and new lot grading as well, so that they are professional volleyball courts with professional sand and professional grading as part of their contribution back to this community of Grand Prairie.
Okay. Thanks very much, councillor Thieson. Open for discussion and debate. Councillor Bressi?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I just wanted to confirm that administration's understanding of the direction being given here and my understanding or, or my recollection of what we said in committee was the same. And that is, the way the motion reads is that they'd identify appropriate facility improvements, but intention of committee, I believe, wasn't that they just identify them and bring it back to council and say, hey, we'd like to let legacy funds be in this, but that we'd empower them to make the decision with the Summer Games Board to, to go out and make that spending just to take some of the bureaucracy away now that we're getting close, close to the game. So I want to make sure that that encompasses this motion.
Sure. Look to the city manager on how management's interpreting that.
Thank you, your worship. And through to councillor Bressi, yes, that's exactly the way we're interpreting it and that, that will be a very interactive process with the Games Committee, but it will be subject to the approval.
But approval of administration, not council?
Yes.
Great. Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks for that question and clarification, councillor Bressi. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Thieson?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Moving right along from Alberta Summer Games to request for a transit stop at the Arborhills area. And the motion is that I would read that council approve providing transit service for students in the Royal Oaks areas requested by the Grand Prairie Catholic School Board on a pilot basis for the months of May and June. Just speaking to this motion, this is a small pilot, as stated in the motion, that will just go for May and June. The recommendation from administration was not to set up a permanent transit location, but to see how it goes and assuming no risk, as the Catholic School Board said, that they would, they would chip in and pay their share on that one to ensure that kids are going to school for May and June to see if there is an active need for this. So I would move that council approve.
Thanks very much, councillor Thieson. That motion's open for discussion and debate. Discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Thieson, anything else you wanted to highlight from that set of minutes?
Uh, not really. We had a couple delegations that came in that day, one from the Prima Group, the Peace Region Independent Media Arts Association, telling us how they spent our city funds that we gave their group, as well as a presentation from the Grand Prairie Sports Council and the Summer Games Committee, which they're not just coming to council every other meeting. It seems like they're also coming to committee as well to keep council informed with how things are going and hopefully it goes well in their recruitment for volunteers.
Okay. Thanks very much, councillor Thieson. So next up, we have the Corporate Services Committee meeting. And I'm just going to look to my two committee members that are here. I think councillor Minhaus was, was actually in attendance to the meeting and so, okay, councillor Minhaus, you're prepared to take that? Okay, if you'll just get your microphone there, please, councillor Minhaus. And I'll ask you to do the items under nine point two, Corporate Services Committee meeting, Tuesday, April 10th, 2018. Councillor Minhaus?
Thank you, Mayor Will Given. I'll move the council approve the meeting with council receive the minutes for Cooperative Services Committee meeting held on Tuesday, April 10th, 2018.
Thanks very much, councillor Minhaus. Thank you. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Any errors or omissions? I don't see anybody ringing in. I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Minhaus?
I move the bylaw C-1318 dash 2018 property tax bylaw amended council approve two percent municipal tax rate increase for 2018.
Okay. Thanks very much, councillor Minhaus. And I'm just, this is laid out in our agenda package a little bit different than I would expect. Is the two percent property tax increase as a result of the items in the property tax bylaw? Or is there a need for council to make that motion? That's actually a budget motion. Okay. So I was confused as well, councillor Minhaus. So I think all we need to do is the, give first reading bylaw C-1380 property tax bylaw. Thanks very much. And so that was the motion that you made. Any, sorry, no discussion or debate on first reading? I catched myself there. I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Minhaus?
I move the second reading, council give the second reading to bylaw C-1380.
Thanks very much, councillor Minhaus. So on second reading, we're going to have discussion and debate. Is there any discussion or debate on bylaw C-1380, the property tax bylaw? I don't see anybody, councillor Thieson, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I guess my question is further to this, item nine point two point two. I know it's not the item that we're discussing and debating, but I think it is relative and relevant that the, if we move through this and we pass this, then the approval of the transfer of our operating surplus of two point six oh five million dollars to the Financial Stabilization Reserve may not be able to be dealt with. I'm just sort of looking around. Normally, we deal with our reserves and then we set our property tax increase. So I'm just wondering, like, if we do nothing here as far as the two point zero percent municipal tax increase, then we're, we're still transferring two point six million dollars over to our Financial Stabilization Reserve? Should we deal with that first or, or should we deal with this motion on the table first? And I, I look to council because I know that there's been lots of discussion over the last few weeks and months, really since budget, as to what we may do with our surplus and/or reserves. And I am wondering if there may be any discussion or debate around what we do with the recommendation for item nine point two point two, and it may have an impact on our municipal tax rate increase. But I'm just going to open it up to council to see if any members are looking to make a motion to switch through what we do here.
Yeah. So that's exactly what we would be able to do. So if we wanted to amend the bylaw by applying any of the 2017 surplus outside of what the policy recommends, now would be the time to do that. And so the motion would be to amend bylaw thirteen eighty to reflect the utilization of those dollars. And then that would make nine point two point two irrelevant because it would have been used, right? There may be some balance left over there. But I don't hear anybody actually making that motion. So unless councillor Thieson, you wish to make that motion?
I'm going to make that motion, actually. And I'm going to do it in, in honor of my friend who's not here, councillor Wade Pilat, who made promises in the election. I'm also made a promise in the election to try to minimize the tax increases. And so I would move that council approve a 0.0% municipal tax rate increase to, to our, I guess, to our 2018 property tax.
So the motion, if your intent is to utilize 2017 surplus to achieve a 0% property tax increase, then you need to specify how you're doing that, because the motion that you just made would, is, doesn't speak to how you're achieving a 0.0.
Okay, let's, let's, let's talk to that then. I would move that we amend the motion to represent a 0.0% municipal tax rate increase by utilizing the 2017 operating surplus to move against the municipal tax rate increase.
That may not be phrased perfectly, but it
Of course not.
It clarifies the intent, I think it gets to, and puts the things that we need to specify the intent of the motion to get to that 0.0, sorry, 0% municipal tax rate increase, and specifies how you're accomplishing that, not by a reduction in spending, but by utilizing prior year's surplus.
For sure. And just to speak to that motion, thank you, Mayor Given, for helping me to clarify that. Just in speaking to this motion, there was a lot of discussion at budget about what, about taking out of reserves to achieve a 0% tax increase. We achieved a 2% tax increase, but yet we still have an operating surplus. I'm not saying we drained the bank on that, but I'm saying that if we have extra, we should be able to move it to a 0% and then take the remainder and put it into our reserves. I believe the, the population of Grand Prairie has asked us throughout the election and throughout the past few years, especially riding an economic downturn, that they don't want any more municipal tax increases. This isn't going to help serve our operational capacity. In fact, this is going to move, help our reserve capacity and move it up. I understand that our Financial Stabilization Reserve needs to achieve a 10% of our annual operating expenses. Right now, the total is less than 5% of what it is, but I also understand that our administration is undertaking a review of all of our reserves. And when we do so, we may find that we're too low, we may find that we're too high, we may find that we're right on target, and maybe we just need to bump up the Financial Stabilization Reserves. But until we have all the data, I think it would be unfair to our population, voting and non-voting population, to continuously raise the increases just to pad our bank account. There's a time to spend and there's a time to save, and I think now is the time to not think about saving, whether that's responsible or irresponsible, that is for council to debate, but that is the motion on the table right now.
Thanks councillor Thieson. Councillor O'Toole.
Thank you very much. During the budget talks, I made a motion to bring it to 2% and then borrow $1 million from the reserves to give us a 3% budget for the price of a 2% budget in the short term, or in a roundabout way. So where does this lead us then? I'd like someone from administration to, I just don't like the idea of taking the $2.6 million without consulting administration at this point in time. They ought maybe, maybe have some ideas for that, and I would just like to hear from somebody at administration.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, your worship and through to council. The Chief Financial Officer and Director of Corporate Services can augment any comments that I might make. The budget was balanced using a 2% tax rate increase and the residual to be made up by a transfer from prior year's reserves, which was considered to be a responsible balance at that time for a couple of reasons. One, we did not know, and we still don't know, whether we've got the right amount of reserves in the corporation to handle the ups and downs that will occur from time to time. It's a $170 million a year corporation and there will be fluctuations that occur. 2017 was managed to be brought in as a surplus, but we can't assure ourselves that that will happen every time. The second reason why it was considered to be an appropriate balance is perhaps more fundamental, and that is that mathematically, if we continue to handle escalating operating costs with transfers from reserves rather than repricing to accommodate the inflation that's occurring in our community, we are delivering to future budget deliberations a severe, a more severe problem than they would, I'm sure, appreciate. 2018, 2017 to 2018 is, depending on whose numbers you're using, typically categorized as a 2.4% inflationary, annual inflationary period. So 2% tax increase is already losing ground to inflation with our pricing mechanism to cover operating costs. Going to zero is losing a significant amount of ground. So that was the rationale. There is a policy in place in the organization that, that triggers us moving surpluses into a reserve for that very reason, so that they can be considered in a more sober moment as budgets are deliberated on in subsequent years. Making an amendment at this time, under these circumstances, would be contrary to that policy. I think the policy was in place for good reason.
Thank you very much. I think I got the answer.
I see councillor Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given, and I think part of my question has been answered. I can recall the, the 2% increase that we voted on and the inclusion of $1 million out of reserves in order to be able to make up the budget amount, but I don't remember the dollar amounts. So I'm not sure what the effect of using this reserve is to meet the actual dollar amounts that are in the budget. And I wouldn't want to make a vote either way without some clarification on that.
Thanks, councillor Blackburn. Was there a specific question? Sorry.
Yes, does, does the moving of this reserve cover the, the amount of increase that we would otherwise get by passing the motion on the tax bylaw as it exists? Or would it leave us with a shortfall?
Mr. City Manager?
Through, through the chair, the typical equation for Grand Prairie is a percent is worth about a million dollars. So there is capacity in the $2.6 million surplus. There is capacity to transfer and negate the funds that would have otherwise been collected through a 2% tax increase. I'm sure the Chief Financial Officer has a more precise number, but I can assure you there is sufficient capacity.
That's, that's good enough for me. If I may just, I would speak against councillor Thieson's motion. I do have a concern that we ensure that our reserves are adequate to meet the challenges that we can't foresee.
Okay, thanks councillor Blackburn. Councillor Bressi?
My apologies, Mr. Mayor and councillor Thieson. Could I just get clarity on what the motion that's on the table is right now and what we'd actually be voting on the next time we vote?
Sure, that's a fair question and worthwhile to check and see how administration's hearing it.
Mayor Given, we have, that's moved by councillor Thieson, that council approve a 0% municipal tax increase to the 2018 property tax by utilizing the 2017 operating surplus.
Excellent, thank you. And I'll be, I'll be voting against it. I'm also going to be voting in a little while that we do not apply this money to our reserves. And that being said, I, I feel that in the fall, we had budget deliberations and I made motions and I voted on motions for lower tax increases, but at the end of the day, I voted for a 2% increase because it was a compromise that our council, that our council found and we made that compromise, we made that decision in November. And I, I think it's more that we stick, that we stick, stick to that. For, in my mind, passing this bylaw is really a housekeeping measure for a decision we've already, we've already made. And I also, I do have a commitment to get to arguing for lower tax, tax increases, and I hope when we come into budget in the fall, that council will be on board with a 0% tax increase or maybe even a deflationary tax, tax increase. But I don't feel that now is the appropriate time to do it, so I'll be voting against it.
Okay, thanks councillor Bressi. I'll just say that I will also not be supporting the amendment. My biggest concern is the impact that an approach like this would have on the 2019 year. It actually makes the job more difficult, as I understand it, for our management team to propose something for 2019 at a 0% increase. It actually puts them sort of in the hole because we're, we're reducing the tax base. And I would actually wonder if Ms. Walker can give a more concise description of the phenomenon that I'm trying to illustrate. Ms. Walker?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Yes, you're exactly right. When a property tax increase is applied, it actually increases our tax base. The use of a reserve would be the use of one-time dollars, so it would reduce the amount of requirement for the current year, but in the following year, we would still need that additional money. And so it would create, so in 2019, we'll have a demand for another 1% on the tax base. And if we use another $2.6 million, we could potentially roughly need another $2.6 million, 2.6% increase on the tax base. So if all things remained equal. Does that help?
Yeah, and so that, that is, is always one of the more sort of complex things that we deal with at budget time, but that's my biggest concern. Before council did any work to discuss programs or services, expansion or reduction of any of them, we would have been, you know, by this motion would be forwarding a 2% budget or tax increase that would have to be negated some other way through a service reduction. I'm actually very confident that this council is taking sustainable steps towards lower property tax rate increases through the use of our priority-based budgeting, the direction that we've given to our management team, and our ongoing discussions with other municipalities in the province about municipal revenues. I'd also highlight for council, this is a time of pretty significant uncertainty as we head into a provincial election. We've seen the province reduce our MSI operating grant. They did forward us some extra money at the end of 2017, but our, our actual MSI operating grant for 2018 and 2019 is, is lower. They've set a lower amount, and I don't think that's an environment where I'm comfortable providing a, a increase just to keep the lights on in the same manner that we were this year. I think this council deserves to give itself as much operating flexibility as possible so that in a comprehensive discussion at budget time where we have all of the numbers on the table and all the council members around the table, that we can make these kind of complex choices. Councillor Minhaus?
Thank you, Mayor Will Given. I will not support either on this council because we had a very good, healthy debate when we got, bringing the tax from 4.6% to 2%. Also, we'd use $1 million from the reserve fund to bring to 2%. And the third thing, because I got all the answers, everybody gave the reasonable. And I don't want, in the future, we don't keep up the inflation, we have to increase the tax for 4% or 3, 5% or 3%. As long we are under the inflation category, we are okay with the 2% this year.
Thank you councillor Minhaus, councillor Blackburn, and then if there is anybody else, I'll go back to councillor Thieson to close. Councillor Blackburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I guess this is a point of order. I'm not sure that we don't have two motions on the table. Did we pass a motion on first reading of the tax bylaw?
So we're taking councillor Thieson's motion as amendment to the bylaw, bylaw 1380.
So if it's an amendment, then shouldn't we be debating second reading?
Yeah, thank you. We did pass first reading. And so, yeah, yeah, yeah. So this is a, so, so this is a motion to amend the bylaw prior to second reading.
I'm sorry, I don't recall voting on first reading, did we?
We did.
We did, okay, thank you.
Councillor Thieson?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I guess I got the opportunity to close, but it looks like if I got my addition right, this is going to be an absolute fail, but at least councillor Pilat will be proud that I tried, as he did at budget time. Just to speak to this motion, I have total faith in our administration, whether this passes or not, the 2% or 0% that we'll be able to find some economic equilibrium within our organization. I have full, I have full faith in our Corporate Services Director and the team around us. And in fact, a lot of the word on the street after we left budget from municipal employees who were already working on their three different budget scenarios, giving me a hard time and other councillors, I had heard that, why didn't you do zero? We were ready for zero. We could have done a zero. And I find that this is a simp, simple and easy way to achieve that zero without putting us at risk. I guess if we want to talk about what's, what's good or not for, for the community and for what we spend on an annual basis, we'll have to wait to entertain councillor Bressi's motion on what we're going to do with that 2.6 perhaps or not. But I would strongly encourage council to listen to the community. The community requested that no more tax increases, and we couldn't supply that at budget, but now we have a surplus and we could supply that now. So I know it's only $79 to the average homeowner-ish, but it's, it could mean a big difference as far as like letting the community know that council has heard and council has listened and council has acted. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Thieson. So we'll call for the vote on councillor Thieson's amendment to bylaw C1380. Please vote. Thank you. That motion does not carry. So we'll move on to second reading of bylaw C1380. Have a motion for second reading. Councillor Minhaus? We need a motion for second reading.
I give the council to give the second reading for law C1380.
Okay, thanks very much councillor Minhaus. Any discussion or debate on second reading? Do we have enough that time around? We use, I don't see, I don't see anybody ringing in, so I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Minhaus?
Can I have the third reading for bylaw C1380 at this meeting?
Hey, thanks very much councillor Minhaus. So this is a motion to have third and final reading of bylaw C1380 here tonight. In order to have all three readings of a bylaw on the same evening, we must pass this motion unanimously. If this motion doesn't pass unanimously, it would come back for final reading at our subsequent council meeting. Is there any discussion or debate as to the merits of having third and final reading here tonight? Seeing nobody ringing in, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Minhaus?
Ask council to give third reading bylaws C1380.
Okay, thanks very much councillor, thanks councillor Minhaus. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading of bylaw C1380? And seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. That motion carries. Councillor Minhaus?
I move the council approve the transfer to 17 operating surplus, 2.65 million to finance stabilized reserve as per policy 338.
Thanks very much councillor Minhaus. Open for discussion and debate, councillor Bressi?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm going to be voting in, I've been going back and forth all weekend on how I was going to vote on this, so I'm going to be voting against this. And as we talk about reserves, really what, largely what they do is they mitigate risk, but it's at opportunity cost of using that money and investing it in our community today. And I understand that we're reviewing our reserve policies and how much is needed in there, and I get that, and I understand those who say, hey, we should wait till that's done to, to, to stop putting money in reserves. That being said, I think for me, it's opportunity cost is more important to me right now than mitigating risk in our community. And so I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote against this. For me, I need to be convinced to put money into reserves, not to, so I'm going to be voting against this. If, if I'm successful in getting a bunch of you, which my eloquent argument is going to do, but if this is defeated, then I'll be following up with a motion that we apply this to our downtown project instead of having as large of a debenture be the motion I'm following up with if we defeat this motion. But for now, just speak my opposition to it.
Thanks very much councillor Bressi. So I would recommend, geez, I need to think about that a little bit, because if the motion is defeated, then I'm not sure, it's a bit challenging for council to come back. And if the second idea is also defeated, to come back and say, oh, now I guess we do want to put it into reserves. So I would look to management for some advice. The city manager made the same suggestion that I was thinking of, but that that should really be an amendment. So the intent of the motion is to speak to the disposition of the 2017 operating surplus. The amendment could be to, to direct the 2017 operating surplus to a project as opposed to the reserve. So it doesn't, you know, the intent of the, of the motion is to deal with the 2017 operating surplus. The amendment would be what we're going to do with it. The amendment would be what we're going to do with it. So I, I suggest that that would be the better way because if, if both motions, the first motion failed to transfer it to its reserve, and then the second motion also failed, then we're stuck with, okay, so now what do we do with the money? Because we said we weren't going to put it into the reserve. So if you want to use it for something, you need to say what you want to use it for and convince council that we should use it for that rather than putting it.
Sure. Sure, I'll take a stab. Sure, I'll take a stab at that. Well, in that case, I would move that we amend this, that, amend the motion that council approve transfer of the 2017 operating surplus of $2,605,000 to be put towards the downtown rehabilitation project in substitution for an equal amount of planned debentures. And I'm okay with that language being cleared up. And to speak to that, really what we're doing is we're talking about opportunity cost. And I think that it, when I look at opportunity for our community, having debt, that's not that, that kills opportunity, that gives us less, less flexibility, less latitude to move. If it's in, if it's, if we're stuck with a 30-year debenture or however long our debenture becomes, then that's something that we're stuck with for the next 30 years. And I know we're going to be taking out debt for the downtown project no matter what this summer, but lessening it by $2.6 million, I think that gives us and future councils more flexibility. So I think that would be a better use of this money right now.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councillor Bressi. That motion's open, that amendment to the main motion is open for discussion and debate. Councillor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Gibbon. I understand what Mr. Bressi is trying to do here, but I was wondering if we were to transfer this money to general revenue with an opportunity to come back and decide at another date where we're going to put this money, whether it's to pay down a debt or some other opportunity. Could we postpone that possibly two weeks?
Mr. City Manager.
Through the chair, I would just point out that if the funds were transferred to the reserve as recommended, council is at liberty at any time to pass a motion to draw from reserve to make use of that capital. So it would accomplish your objective.
I just don't feel that we have enough information tonight to make a legitimate decision. There's lots of numbers and interest in all the other stuff that we should talk about. And I would just like to leave it at that. And if this motion fails, then I would make a motion to, I'd leave the motion as it stands, actually. Thank you.
Councillor O'Toole, yeah, just speaking to that, I mean, the intent of reserves is so that you can choose to use them for something at a later date. So, you know, it would have the same effect if council wanted to consider what we use our reserves for, we could have that discussion over the next week. And if this money was in that reserve, then we could choose to direct it out of there at any time, at any time.
Thank you.
Councillor Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor Gibbon. I'll speak against the amendment, partly because I'm concerned about ensuring that our reserves are adequate, as I mentioned before. Secondly, I would just remind Councillor Bressi about the comments he made earlier that a lot of this stuff has already been debated and decided by previous council, by our council in previous meetings. And I think it was a sound decision at the time, and I believe that it still is a sound decision. And the other point was made by our city manager. Thank you, Mr. Nicolai, for reminding us that once it's in reserve, then it's there for us to use as we choose. And so putting it there is, doesn't lock it away. So I would speak against the amendment.
Thanks, Councillor Blackburn. I have one point in, in our package, you will see the city's consolidated financial statements. And in there, on page 63 of those, in note 12, it speaks to the city's debt limits and the percent of our provincial debt limit that we are, you know, how close we are to the ceiling that the province sets for how much we can borrow. I'd note that under our total debt limit, we are under 50% of the provincial limit. So we're losing less than half of the debt that we could under provincial rules. And under the debt servicing in terms of like how much our monthly payments could be, if you want to think of it that way, we are far under, far under 50%, I would, I think maybe 40% of our provincial mandated limit. So in terms of our debt capacity, I, I don't see that as a press, as pressing an issue as might have been proposed. Additionally, and this is something that I don't remember, and so I'm going to look to the Corporate Services Director. Susan, can you remind me of what interest rate the city pays on, on debt that it takes out? When can, and can you contrast that with our typical rate of return on investments? And I think your microphone didn't go on. You're way at the bottom of the list, and so you have to actually push your, push the microphone on part.
Really hard. Thank, thank you, Mayor Gibbon. So currently, our debt interest rate is about 3.2%. It, it varies, of course, as to when you take the, the debt. Depends on what the rate is at the time. Investments, long-term investments typically range anywhere from 2.5% to 5.5% depending on the period of time that you have it invested for.
Thanks very much. And so just speaking to that, I was trying to do that from recollection from a Corporate Services Committee a couple of weeks ago, when we had a presentation on the city's portfolio. But I think that bears it out that in terms of opportunity cost, we actually may be losing more opportunity by not investing this in a financial stabilization reserve where it could potentially carry, receive interest, which would be above the rate of interest that we would pay on debt. And when you add to that the fact that the assets for downtown are long-lived assets that a number of generations of Grand Prairie residents are going to use, I see it as completely reasonable that for the next 20 years of people that drive on those roads and walk on those sidewalks and use those storm sewer pipes, that they will also help contribute to their, to them by paying for them. Those are all reasons why I, I won't support the motion. I think debt's appropriate in terms of that long-lived asset. And I don't think that there's an opportunity missed. In fact, I think maybe exactly the opposite, we may be missing the opportunity if we don't build our reserves where we could potentially be receiving long-term interest. I see Councillor Friesen in the queue.
Thank you. I will be speaking, or voting against the amendment. I tend to be a little cautious, and I, I really like the value of having some, having cash in hand above, I think it's okay to have a little healthy debt, but yeah, I'd be real cautious to move it somewhere else. And Councillor Bressi, don't you hate it when your words come back to bite you? Wasn't this a housekeeping thing? Thanks.
I see Councillor Thiessen in the queue.
Thank you very much, Mayor Gibbon. I'm going to also speak against the motion and also to the, to the comments on, on debt that's good for roads, because I don't think that is good for roads. We just renovated and rehabbed 68th Avenue, we're having all kinds of problems in there. It looks like we may or may not have to put some money into that. So if we're borrowing over 20 years for a road, we may have to put into that road in three to five years as well. But Councillor Bressi, I know I spoke to move this in a different fashion, but since that motion got defeated, I'll just say that currently, I did the math very, very quickly, we're at about 4.23% of that particular reserve, which is an unhealthy reserve number. And I'd hate to rob Peter to pay Paul here and then borrow and use our property tax or I guess our surplus revenue to, to go into the downtown infrastructure. I just don't see it worthwhile investing in yellow brick roads. But at the end of the day, if we're not going to put $70 in our taxpayers' pockets, I'd rather see it go to the, to the reserves that it's intended to go to and get closer to that 10%. Thank you.
Thanks, Councillor Thiessen. I don't see anybody else in the queue, so I will go to Councillor Bressi to close.
Thank you, Mayor Gibbon. Councillor Friesen, I wish you hadn't stolen my thunder when I get to say Councillor Blackburn, touche. And I have yet to achieve the one against eight vote, but I'm going to achieve the rare six or seven against zero vote. And I'm going to be voting against, against my own amendment. And I think council.
So, so just, and so I think actually our procedure bylaw says you may vote against your, a motion that you've made, but you can't speak against it. So you may just want to end there.
Okay. I changed my mind. Talk to me after I change my mind.
Thanks. Thanks very much, Councillor Bressi. I will call for the vote on the amendment. Please vote. I can cancel that vote if there were council members that voted incorrectly.
I'm getting a picture for you.
Okay. I will, I will call for the vote on Councillor Bressi's amendment. A vote in favor of the amendment would see the financial stability, sorry, the 2017 surplus utilized to replace debenture borrowing towards the downtown enhancement project. Please vote. We'll go, the one that we wanted to push there that time? Okay. Thank you. That motion does not carry. We will move on to the main motion as made by Councillor Minhoss. Is there any discussion or debate on the main motion? Councillor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Gibbon. Since I didn't get speak to close the last one, I do just want to say I'm, I'm okay doing this because I know we're revaluing reserves, but I do hope that as we're revaluing what we're going to do with reserves, the council will take an aggressive look at them as we figure out what's actually used, we get a better picture. I'm going to be advocating for an aggressive approach, and I hope council will join me in that. But thank you.
Thanks very much, Councillor Bressi. I don't see anybody else in the queue on item 9.22, so I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Minhoss, your work isn't done yet. You'll just have to get your microphone, because we, you'll just have to get your microphone, Councillor Minhoss, because we went off and we went through the discussion there.
Gibbon, remind me, the motion 9.2.3, council approve the audit consolidated financial statement, CDI of Grand Prairie for the year end of December 31st, 217.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councillor Minhoss. Any discussion or debate on this motion to accept the audited consolidated financial statements? Seeing nobody ringing in, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Minhoss.
I move 9.2.4, council give the first reading to bylaw 1381 being 2018 special recreation service tax bylaw, Pinnacle Ridge.
Thanks very much, Councillor Minhoss. There's no discussion or debate on first reading. I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Minhoss.
I give the city council give the second reading on bylaw 1381.
Thanks very much, Councillor Minhoss. That motion is open for discussion and debate. Is there any discussion or debate with respect to bylaw C1381? This is a special services tax that applies only to the Pinnacle Ridge neighborhood. It is there exclusively to fund the operation and maintenance of the entrance feature to the neighborhood as well as the water feature in the neighborhood, body of water. I want to call it a pond, I'm not sure if that's the exact right definition, but in that, there's a spray, a spray feature in the pond in Pinnacle Ridge. This pays for the, the maintenance and operation of that, as well as the maintenance operation and repair of the waterfall feature at the entrance to Pinnacle Ridge. And it has been in existence for a number of years, but has to be reauthorized every year. Councillor Blackburn.
Mayor Gibbon, I'm not opposed to this, but I wonder if we've taken the pulse of the neighborhood recently to find out whether there's still an appetite for this special tax.
Sure. So I think I would look to Director Miyagi for an answer to that question. Director Miyagi.
Thank you, your worship. Through the chair, we have taken the, the, the public engagement process through the Facebook and notifications on a, what's that called? Through the media. We have not done a door-to-door, but for this bylaw, that's not required. So we felt that we've engaged the, the community.
Thanks very much, Director Miyagi. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing nobody else in the queue, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Minhoss.
Can I have a third reading on bylaw C1381?
Okay. Thanks very much, Councillor Minhoss. So this is a motion again to have third and final reading here at this meeting tonight. Is there any discussion or debate as to the merits of having third and final reading here tonight? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion passes unanimously. Councillor Minhoss.
Can I have a third reading bylaws at 1381?
Thanks very much, Councillor Minhoss. So this is the actual motion for third and final reading. Is there any, one last opportunity? Is there any discussion or debate on bylaw C1381, the special recreational services tax bylaw for Pinnacle Ridge? Seeing nobody ringing in, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Thanks very much, Councillor Minhoss, for stepping in on that set of minutes. Much appreciated. I know that you weren't even, you, you weren't the, the chair or the acting chair, you were the, you and I were the only two there holding down the fort, and thanks for coming in and holding down the fort to pass all the minutes and all those motions. We'll move to 9.3, the Arts Development Committee meeting. And I think Councillor Blackburn, that was yours. And you'll just have to get your microphone there.
Thank you. I would move that council receive the minutes of the Arts Development Committee meeting held Wednesday, April 11th, 2018, as presented.
Thanks very much, Councillor Blackburn. Any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Anything that we got to change up before we adopt them officially? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Blackburn, anything you wanted to highlight from that set of minutes?
Yes, it was a very good meeting. We gave away some money, which is what we tend to do, and it's a pleasure to be able to do so. First, we gave out $7,000 to four recipients in the Individual Project and Scholarship Fund. And that money went to Kaylee Pearson for the Royal Academy of Dance, Daniel Sanchez for some individual personal training from an expert in airbrush art, and to Christina Alexander for training and performance fellowship in Germany, and to Jordan Leaf to enable him to record three singles to, to promote his, his skills. Then in the festival funding, we have $23,000 available. And there is a, a fall application process with a deadline of October 1st. So our intention was not to give away the bank at this meeting. We actually gave $5,500 to two applicants. GP Aboriginal Circle of Services for their round dance, which will be held on the 16th of November, and to the Native Counselling Services of Alberta for their indigenous sharing of cultural festival, which will be in June on the 24th. And that's my full report.
Great. Thanks very much, Councillor Blackburn, and I think we adopted that set of minutes. Councillor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Gibbon. Just a comment really, as a member of the Arts Committee, we had received multiple, multiple applications for individual project grant funding, and the only reason why I mention that is that Councillor Blackburn said we pared it down to four, but that was with the incredible discussion that was undertaken at the table and the debate by our committee members, myself and Councillor Blackburn, as well as Margaret Johansson, Susan Anneto, and Alan Tybals. The, the debate was good, the arguments are great, and despite what Councillor Bressi believes, I made a motion at that committee meeting, and I voted against myself, lost 0 to 5. So maybe you got me beating numbers, but I got an 0-5 as well.
Thanks, Councillor Thiessen. Councillor Blackburn, I think you get to step in for 9.4 as well. And you'll just have to restart your microphone there. Thank you.
I move that council receive the minutes of the Infrastructure and Protective Services Committee meeting held Tuesday, April 17th, 2018, as presented.
Thanks very much, Councillor Blackburn. Are there any errors or omissions or changes that we need to make to that set of minutes before we adopt them for once and for all? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries councillor Blackburn.
Thank you. First, I would move that council award tender T 0255218 to Wapiti Gravel Suppliers Limited for $2,714,399.78 exclusive of GST as the lowest qualified bidder meeting the city specifications for the road rehab and overlay phase two.
Thanks very much councillor Blackburn. Is there any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries councillor Blackburn.
Thank you for the road rehab and overlay phase three, which is the last of the rehab and overlay projects for 2018. I move the council award T 1455218 to Canelson Sand and Gravel Limited for $2,201,577.50 exclusive of GST as the lowest qualified bidder meeting city specifications.
Thanks very much councillor Blackburn. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Again, seeing nobody ringing in, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries councillor Blackburn.
Thank you. And regarding 2018 catch basin manhole repairs, I move the council award T 0755218 to Rico Construction 2010 Limited for $656,219.24 exclusive of GST as the lowest qualified bidder meeting city specifications. And just to speak to this very briefly, this is fully funded through not only budget amounts for 2018, but also using funds remaining from previous catch basin manhole repair plans. So it is fully funded even though it goes over the amount of money that is typically funded in one year for such a project.
Thanks very much councillor Blackburn. Discussion and debate councillor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I was just wondering if we're in line with the regular amount of money that we would spend on an annual basis for the road rehab as well as the catch basin manhole repairs. Are we spending more money this year or are we about the same as we have in the past?
I will look to director Galante.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are in line with previous seasons. There is a, there is a caution or a contingency depending the winter and the movement on the catch bases and manholes. This winter has been really bad and we're noticing more severe dips in, in the roads. But we are, I would say, within a 20% range compared with previous years. Thank you.
You very much. I take it the bids were submitted before the gas prices went up? Thank you.
Councillor O'Toole. I don't see anybody else in the queue. So we'll call for the vote on the recommendation with respect to catch basin manhole repairs. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries councillor Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'd like to give a little bit of preamble to this before we go into these seven motions. Back in 2017, I believe it was September, there was, council was looking at bylaw C 1325 and C 1323, which have to do with the subdivision authority bylaw and, and the related bylaw for engineering fees, et cetera. And first and second reading were given to amendments at that time. Permission to have third reading at the same meeting was defeated. And during the discussion after that, council asked administration to have a look at the concept of having time extensions separated and dealt with in different manners for large and small subdivisions. Administration has come back to tell us that there is no difference in the way that a time extension is handled regardless of the size of the subdivision. And therefore they recommend it against such a move because it's simply not necessary. So to clean it all up, we're looking at the, at rescinding first and second reading of those two bylaws that were started in last September. And we're also looking at a, a policy because bylaw 1323B also deals with the fact that we would like to give authority to the subdivision authority officer to make decisions with, about time extensions without referring them to council unless that person wishes to do so, in which case rather than referring it to council, they would refer it to the information and protective, sorry, Infrastructure and Protective Services Committee. The other thing that changed in all of this is from the time that that was dealt with and our present time, the committee changed from being the Community Safety Committee to being Infrastructure and Protective Services. So all of those changes are now encompassed in what we're about to deal with.
It's going to take seven motions to do it.
Pardon me?
It's going to take seven motions to do it.
It is. So let's, let's start. I would move that council rescind first and second reading of bylaw C 1325A.
Thanks very much councillor Blackburn. That motion, any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries councillor Blackburn.
I would move that council rescind first and second reading of bylaw 13, C 1323A.
Thanks very much councillor Blackburn. Any discussion or debate on 1323A? Was there anybody else that had to go back and forth a few times to see that one was 1325A and one was 1323A? I don't see anybody else ringing in in the queue. I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries councillor Blackburn.
Thank you. I would move that we give first reading to bylaw C 1323B being an amendment to the subdivision authority bylaw.
Thanks very much councillor Blackburn. So there's no discussion or debate on first reading. I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries councillor Blackburn.
Thank you. I would move that council give second reading to bylaw C 1323B. And just a reminder that what this does is provide the subdivision authority officer with the ability to approve subdivision time extensions without having to refer them to committee or council, but that they do have the option to refer to committee if they so wish.
Thanks very much councillor Blackburn. Thanks for helping us keep them all straight. Any discussion or debate on the motion for second reading? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries councillor Blackburn.
Thank you. I would ask council to have third reading on bylaw C 1323B at this meeting.
Thanks very much councillor Blackburn. As you heard, this is a motion to have third and final reading here and it's another one of those ones that must pass unanimously. Otherwise, we'll come back at a subsequent council meeting. Is there any discussion or debate as to the merits of having third and final reading here tonight? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries councillor Blackburn.
Thank you. I would ask council to give third reading to bylaw C 1323B being an amendment to the subdivision authority bylaw.
Thanks very much councillor Blackburn. In case anybody's wondering, I feel it's important to ask every time just in case somebody forgot something that they wanted to bring up. So I'll ask if there's anybody that has any discussion or debate on third and final reading. Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. I don't, I don't ask just for my health. Motion carries. Thanks councillor Blackburn. I think you have one piece of business related to this.
Yes. Yes. I would move that council adopts subdivision time extension policy 620. And speaking of that, I'll just remind people that this policy is a new policy and I believe it is designed to provide the subdivision authority officer with the guidelines by which subdivision time expansions would be, would be handled.
Thanks very much councillor Blackburn. Any discussion or debate on the motion? I would just say that this, the Urban Developers Institute, Grand Prairie, the land development industry representatives were consulted on this and we did receive a letter of endorsement and support for the direction that's sort of proposed in this overall package from that industry association. Is there any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. That motion carries. Thanks very much councillor Blackburn. Was there anything else you wanted to highlight from that Infrastructure and Protective Services?
Let me just, I, I think there was, but I need to check. Hang on just a second. Yes, there were a couple of things. No, there are not.
We made motions on everything that we could possibly make motions on coming up.
Yes, yeah. I'm thinking I must be holding some kind of record for myself on the number of unanimous votes I just got passed.
Oh, you might have just jinxed it. Okay, thanks very much councillor Blackburn. We'll move on to 9.5. Councillor O'Toole, I think Pursuit of Excellence was yours this time around?
Yes, that's correct. Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would make a motion to that council receive the minutes for the Pursuit of Excellence Committee meeting held Wednesday, April 18th, 2018 as presented.
Thanks very much councillor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. That motion carries councillor O'Toole. Anything you want to highlight for us?
Oh, I got lots. So we awarded, we had $42,500 at the pot at the beginning of the year and $40,000 comes from the city, $2,500 comes from the county. And speaking of the county, Mayor Reeve, Leanne Bopri is now sitting on our board as well. And we had some great debate. But all things said and done, we have given out money, scholarships to a number of different sports, including snowboarding, rodeo, track and field, tumbling and trampoline, biathlon, figure skating, football, and cross-country skiing. We also gave money out with the Come Fly With Me funding. And that was to Kiran, I got it here, I was writing it down. Kiran has received a number of dollars over the years and Kiran Goldhawk. And he received, I think it was $1,000. We will also be handing out three more of those scholarships in the fall or when the next meeting takes place. We also gave money out in the different aspects of those sports to athlete travel funding, coach development, and clinic hosting. So I can't give you a number where we're at now, but at the next meeting, I'll tell you exactly where we're at with, out of that pot. So thank you very much.
Thanks very much councillor O'Toole. We will, I think that concludes all of our committee business. We had no items of correspondence this evening. We did have two delegations. We had a presentation from our Alberta Summer Games Host Society. Could I have a motion to adopt that for information councillor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Given. So moved.
Thanks very much councillor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries councillor Thiessen. I think we also had the presentation from Ms. Hetland.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would move that we refer the ban of single-use plastic bags to the appropriate standing committee.
Thanks very much councillor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. I think that handles all of our delegation businesses from this evening. We had no notice of motion. And we'll move into item number 13 on our agenda, council member reports. We'll start with the Combative Sports Commission councillor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Just got, we had a short meeting just after we have a regular event. We like to go over some stuff that we can improve on. And one of the things that took place, we had a past athlete that's been up here a number of times and he was showing some unprofessional conduct. And we're going to be dealing that in-house. He hadn't signed up for a fight because the competitor that he was about to enter the ring with backed out for medical reasons. So we'll be dealing with that with the promoter as well as in-house. Also, we will be looking at for our, for our officials and for the commission itself, we'll be looking at getting some conflict resolution training in the next little while. And we also had one other issue that we had a member of the commission that applied and he was accepted. And he hasn't been to any meetings, but so with that being said, his job changed and he hasn't been able to. So we'll be looking forward to, because he hasn't been contributing to the commission, we'll be looking for someone to replace him. So we've gone through the process with the system here in, in our city hall. And we'll be dealing with that in the next little while as well.
Thanks very much councillor O'Toole. We'll move next to the Grand Prairie Library Board. Councillor Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I guess I've had enough practice now that I remembered to put my mic on. Thank you. The library board meeting was held on the 10th of April and it was a very good meeting. One of the things that was presented to us was the plan of service for operational strategies for 2018. And just to highlight a couple of things that, that give you a sense of, of how well planned and organized our library system is. There's four pillars to the operating strategy. The first one is family blended programs. And that includes one very interesting event, the Day at Hogwarts, which will take place on the 12th of May. And I encourage people to look for information about that. The second area is engagement and awareness and communications. And that includes for us some work on planning a community outreach van that the library will be able to use to go out into the community and provide services. In the area of technology, we've increased the budget for adult eBooks. We're providing some adult how-to training on how to use the electronic services that are available at the library. And we've just installed new self-checkout terminals in the library. I talked to one user who finds them much more user-friendly than the previous ones. And then fourth is the lifelong learning, including our summer session on the legalization of cannabis, which will be an interesting thing for a lot of people, I would suspect. Another thing that we're looking at in the near future is new signage within the library. We're calling it wayfinding. In other words, signage that helps you discover where the books are and where the, where the services are located. Our website improvements are ongoing and people should drop by the children's library and have a look at the fabulous new furniture that's been installed there. Looks great.
Thanks very much councillor Blackburn. I will jump in to provide an update on the AUM, Alberta Urban Municipalities Association. I'm attending an AUMA board meeting this Thursday. We have a number of different topics, including approval of the convention agenda. You might have not thought that convention was something that would be a topic of discussion already, but at the AUMA board it is already, as well as discussing amendments, Bill 14, the Act to Empower Utility Consumers, which is an act to expand the mandate of the utilities consumer advocate. This is a fairly significant act in that the utilities consumer advocate will now have a role with respect to water, wastewater, and storm drainage systems utilities. And so our city manager sits on the AUMA subcommittee that has dealt with that. So he's very familiar. But that is one of the things that's coming forward, as well as a review of the big city charters. The province recently announced that they are bringing forward updates to the big city charter regulations for Edmonton and Calgary, as were promised in the Municipal Government Act review. So the AUMA board is going to be reviewing the substance of those to see whether or not there's something that may be applicable for other municipalities. be applicable for other municipalities. And I just thought I would provide that update. It still feels a bit weird for me to give committee reports at this point, but I want to make sure that I'm representing the council, what we're doing at the AUMA board, and so I thought I'd provide that short update. Councillor Blackburn will turn back to you for Grand Prairie Regional Tourism Association.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Tourism Association met just this past week, and something that I neglected to mention to this council earlier is that we received from our executive director, Louise Kotay, a letter of resignation in February. And Louise will be leaving at the end of February. The, a new executive director search has been conducted, and there is an offer of employment that was made last Thursday. At this point, I don't know the status or the result of that offer. The association's budget is still not fully finalized, although a couple of versions were created as contingencies, but we're still awaiting responses from some municipalities on the funding increase request that was sent out to each of the municipalities that that the association serves. And a presentation will be coming to our Community Living Committee sometime in the near future about just that. There were many reports around the table of good things happening in the region. There's lots to attract people to to our region and have them fully entertained and surely wanting to come back again. And the other good news is that our new 2018 tourism guide is complete and on its way back from the printer. That's about it for this time.
Thanks very much councillor Blackburn. And I'll also provide an update on the Midsize City Mayors Group or caucus on Friday of this week. I'm going to be in Oketoks for the meeting of that group, which is an informal group representing mayors and CAOs from communities that are in a population range of fifteen thousand to probably a hundred and fifty thousand, I guess, anybody that's not evident in Calgary on the top end. And on the agenda for this meeting are items submitted by different municipalities in that group relating to everything from public transit, housing, another review of the big city charters, obviously a number of the larger cities that are not evident in Calgary are keenly interested in what those big city charters might hold, police funding formula and the inequities in that system, the future of MSI and cannabis preparations. And so a great opportunity to learn from other municipalities, and in some cases, develop joint advocacy approaches that speak with the full weight of the communities represented in that sort of loose caucus. We did the math one time, and the members of the Midsize City Mayors Group represented about a million Albertans and a significant number of provincial constituencies. And so it is a very, can be a very effective voice. A number of times, the group has signed letters to the provinces, to the province on issues of mutual interest. And it's pretty powerful when you see a letter signed by twenty-two mayors saying that this is an issue that's important to all of our communities. And so look forward, I always look forward to meetings in the Midsize City Mayors Group and look forward to updating council on our discussions when we return next week. I think that was all of our council member reports from external agencies, boards, and commissions. I will turn to council, oh, sorry, councillor O'Toole, my, thank you very much. We have our one that isn't on the list, thank you, and that's the Alberta Bilingual Municipalities Association. Thanks very much for catching that, and we'll make sure to get it on the regular list. Councillor O'Toole.
Thank you very much. We did have a conference call this last week. I had with me joined was Rebecca Lee from the city's economic development, and she's been doing a lot of homework for the council to make sure that we are part of this by Alberta Bilingual Municipalities Association. One of the reasons the city came on board was to promote the French-speaking culture, the heritage, the support, the local school boards, local businesses. And if the city could use our steps forward for any economic enhancement, the council supports this initiative. One of the things that that really kind of knocked the socks off the committee or the association was Grand Prairie has a newcomer's guide that's it's printed in French, and it's the first one in the province that they're aware of. So that was a really eye-opener for them. And we come up with a date for our next meeting, and that will be also in the same time as the Francophone and the Francophile Municipalities Network midterm meeting, which will be held here in Grand Prairie, September fifth through seventh at 2018. So we're going to have not a joint meeting, but we'll have our meeting at the same time when the traveling is taking place.
Excellent. Thanks very much councillor O'Toole, and great to see we've immediately activated our membership in that association, and thanks very much for taking the lead on that. Next, we'll turn to council member roundtable, and we'll turn to councillor Friesen to provide her update. Councillor Friesen.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I had a blast this couple of weeks. I attended a ton of really fun things in the city, and it's tough to narrow it down. But I do want to mention the Leaders of Tomorrow Awards. I attended that on Wednesday and was really pleased to see some great young leaders in our community receive awards in the thirteen to fifteen-year-old age category. Maddie Campbell, Augustine Clark, Kaylee Gillis, Taylor Kimpy Miller, Talia Peters. In sixteen to eighteen years old, Ravenel Gladu, Kira Kruger, Sophie Leslie, and Heather Taylor. And I had the the honor of introducing Alex Zahara, who still is Sandy to me as he was in when we went to high school together, but he's a an actor, a Canadian actor who is from Grand Prairie, and he was the keynote speaker there. So that was pretty fun. And this morning, grade sixes are studying municipal government right now, and I was invited to Ms. Caitlin Crowe's class at Derek Taylor School. So I answered their questions, and then we did a little exercise where we had eight councillors and Mayor Crowe up at the front, and the gallery, everyone else got to speak to, we listed out all of the things that we had in the city now, the things that they wanted in the city. And then they were given a number that represented a zero percent tax increase, and they decided on what to do with our taxes. So it's very interesting that they cut our road budget by half. And their rationale was that, so are you hearing this, Director Galante? The rationale is that the the potholes and the poor upkeep on the roads will slow people down, thereby increasing safety. So we'll keep that in mind for discussion at next budget. But they moved the money over. They did achieve a zero percent increase, and that money they moved over to build a wildlife park in Grand Prairie. So that is how Ms. Caitlin Crowe's class handled the budget. It was a really fun morning and a cool exercise to do. And I really enjoyed the Earth Day celebration at at Montrose Cultural Center. And I met a couple of new people from the city in in operations that I hadn't met before. So that was really nice to get out there and support. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much councillor Friesen. We'll move next to councillor Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I did attend a few events, most of which you already heard about this evening. I spent a fair bit of time rehearsing my delivery on the time extension policy, and and I don't really have anything to highlight.
Thanks very much councillor Blackburn. Councillor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I guess I had to clear my schedule last week due to unforeseen circumstances, so I had a lighter week. But I would like to just update council on the point-in-time count that I alluded to at the last council meeting. I partook with two other volunteers, and we surveyed the entire hillside and hospital area, looking for hidden homeless. Fortunately, it was a really, really cold day, and so we didn't find a lot of people outside of the hospital area that were out shivering in the cold. But we did have other successful people find in the River Valley area and in other areas like that. But I just am only mentioning it because this is a an effort undertaken by the seven cities across Alberta at one given point in time to count our homeless population and to understand what are the issues and how we can maybe improve upon those numbers as in by lessening them. So I just wanted to put out a big shout out and thank you to all of our organizers, the CSD, and other service organizations in the community, as well as our hard-working volunteers that braved the cold with myself in various areas around the city to achieve those numbers and to make sure that Grand Prairie was counted in the point-in-time count. Speaking of point-in-time and counting, days are ticking away. You have till May fifth, anyone who's watching online and anybody in the house to to go online and do our municipal census. It's your time to be counted as one of the housed and living in Grand Prairie. So I would encourage all who are watching and all who are here to partake in that. And then you won't have to close the drapes, lock the doors, hide your secondary suite renters, and and all that other jazz when people, our municipal census workers, come knocking at your door. This is your opportunity to avoid that and to achieve your privacy and the sanctity of your own home. So by all means, jump online, cityofgrandprairie.com, has all the details on how you can be counted in our 2018 municipal census.
Thanks very much councillor Thiessen. And just to really drive home the point, if you do complete the municipal census online, it specifically says that the city of Grand Prairie will take no action with respect to number of people reported in individual homes. And I really want to make that point a hundred percent clear that it's very important, first and foremost, the city of Grand Prairie gets an accurate count of how many people are here, and any other concerns with respect to development permits or that sort of thing. It's important that we get a full and accurate count. And in fact, it impacts the city's funding from provincial authorities and federal authorities through grants. And so make sure that you, everyone is counted. Count yourself in. Exactly. Thanks councillor Thiessen. Councillor Bressi.
Well, thank you, Mayor Given. I've spent the last couple of weeks mostly being away, learning things, and it's been, it's been a blast. A few highlights of what I learned was at my assessment review board training, we got to unpack a little bit the different tax rates that the Municipal Government Act now allows for small businesses and vacant industrial land, among others. And I think that next year, when we're going through a budgeting process and coming up to the property tax bylaw, we should be talking about, do we want to make use of those new subclasses that were allowed? So I I look forward to that discussion in a few months when we get to have it. A few other things I learned, I went to an FCM Asset Management workshop up in Peace River, and the workshop was, I don't know if it was worth the drive, but the time that I got to spend with Valleyview Council was very worthwhile, and I got all kinds of insight from them. Something I thought interesting was, a few years ago, Valleyview decided that it was worth it for them to start making their own roads and doing a lot of their own road work instead of contracting it out. And I have no idea if us being bigger than them makes that makes that more difficult or easier. I have no idea. But it's interesting that that's a route they've gone, and it's something that I'm kind of interested in hearing if we've ever tried it, and learning more about, is that something we should explore? And then finally, oh, and speaking of roads, by the way, what is it, Ms. Crowe's class, I got drilled on how bad our roads were. I just want to point that out. Yeah, but last thing I learnt about a few days ago, actually, was that a municipality can give a charitable tax receipt. And I never never learnt that before. And I've had a brief conversation with our city manager. I look forward to unpacking it more. I love, we've got lots of groups from neighborhood associations to sporting groups, to to others that are improving public land and often fundraising money to do that, and not being able to give a tax receipt themselves because they're not registered charity, I know for a fact is a barrier to them. So look forward to learning, can we establish a procedure, and can we help these groups fundraise money to make public lands better? So those are a few things that I learnt about.
That's great. Thanks very much councillor Bressi. Councillor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I had a number of things are on my list. I left my cellphone at home with all my good stuff. But I did go to a meeting at the airport, aviation industry update on what the trends are in the past and what they are looking forward to the future. And I found that very interesting. Also, on Friday, we had a meeting with the joint council, the county and the city. And I think that went extremely very, very good. I also did a little cultural event. I did do the Vasheki Festival with Mayor Given and city manager Bob Robert Nicollet, and was joined with councillor Yad Minhas. I just wanted to comment on a couple of other items that are up in the air right now. I'm, earlier, I was mentioned that I was on the Alberta Games, Summer Games Food Services Committee. And just a short summary of the meeting, how it went, we met with the catering people and the food suppliers, had a sample menu to view, not the food tasting, just to view the, just in case anybody's wondering. Just to give you an idea, there's going to be twenty-six hundred suppers for the Friday, twenty-six hundred breakfasts for the Saturday, sixteen hundred box lunches for Saturday afternoon lunch, somewhere around twenty-three hundred breakfasts for Sunday, sixteen hundred box lunches for Sunday lunch. All meals are made from scratch. All food is fresh, and all food is made the same day it is served. There will be approximately twenty chefs that will be preparing the food around the clock, and serving will take place at two main locations, the composite high school, which will serve about eleven hundred people, and Charles Spencer, also at about eleven hundred people. The things that are on the menu that need to be looked at as well is we're going to be eco-friendly, we're going to be recycling as much and using as least amount of products that would go to the landfill. Nutritional is extremely important. Some of these athletes athletes burn more calories in an afternoon than most people at our age would burn in an entire day. And allergy-friendly. So there's lots of stuff that's really, really brought up that was important. Also, the Philip J. Curry Dinosaur Museum is having their AGM on May tenth. And if you're interested in becoming a board member, we are taking nominations. The meeting will be at six o'clock, and if you do have an interest, you can just send your application with a short bio to dynomuseum.ca. And with speaking of the dinosaur museum, the restaurant has extended hours. It's probably the best pizza and burgers ever in Wembley, plus much more food. If you're thinking of going out for a nice drive one evening, you're open from eleven o'clock in the morning till nine PM. And there is no gallery admission required. So how's that for a promotion like you wouldn't believe, eh? Thank you.
Thanks very much councillor O'Toole. I'm hungry just listening to you. Councillor Minhas.
Well, Given, again, I think most of them speak where I went last couple of weeks. What my, was very busy with our community, with the Sikh religion. Our religion was born three hundred and nineteen years ago. So that's what Kevin Sewell and Junis and Bill Given show up there and with our manager, Bob. The function we had won, but before that, I spent last two weeks quite a bit involvement because this month, April is, our Sikh community's big thing is harvesting season, just like Thanksgiving Day, we celebrate. And also, this is the April thirteenth is our, the religion born nineteen ninety, sorry, sixteen ninety-nine. And that was the Sikhism born three hundred and nineteen years ago. So I was quite busy with the church. We did the program three days in our church and kept me busy that whole community. There's lots of the things we happen. But it was interesting week all through. Thank you.
Thanks very much councillor Minhas. I will just provide a couple highlights that I don't think have been mentioned by other councillors. I attended the media event and reception of the 2018 Alberta Summer Games Host Society. They were marking their hundred days out from the games. And, you know, once again, an opportunity for Grand Prairie residents to get involved. Grand Prairie, as we all know, Grand Prairie is a community that always has newcomers. There's always people that are new to Grand Prairie. And so there are many, many people in our community who haven't experienced the fun and enjoyment that you get from being a participant, or sorry, a volunteer in the in a games. Many of us have had the long timers, I guess, depending on how long a time you've been in Grand Prairie. You might have had a chance to participate in the nineteen ninety-five Canada Winter Games, the two thousand Alberta Summer Games, the 2010 Arctic Winter Games. But this most recent opportunity is a great chance, if you're new to Grand Prairie, to get to know other people and to get involved in a way that will leave a lasting memory for you and where you get to leave a lasting memory for those participants that come to our community. And so I just would encourage people to step up and volunteer for that as much as possible. I also had a chance to go to a grade six class. I was at Riverstone Public School with two grade six social studies classes, talking about local government. And so it's great to see so many council members getting out, taking advantage of those invitations. And it's great to see that local government is is covered in the grade six curriculum. I always talk to the kids and say, I think it's the most important level of government. And then I say, of course, I think that because I'm the mayor. But in addition to that, I think it's the most important level of government because it has the most direct impact on your lives. And lives. And I think each and every one of us could probably do a little bit of a talk about that, but I think it's very, very true, and local governments are underappreciated by the impact, about the impact that they have on people's lives. And so the chance to educate kids and share with them some observations about things that they might not consider, like that sidewalk that's under my feet, how did it get there? Who made that, who made that idea that we should have a sidewalk in this neighborhood or not? And I always enjoy that opportunity. I also had an opportunity to have lunch with the city manager, although that wasn't that special. I like you, Bob, but that wasn't the big thing. But the city manager and I had a chance to have lunch with the presidents of the Royal Canadian Legion and the Anavets to talk about issues of mutual interest. I also enjoyed attending the Vasaki Festival put on by the East Indian Cultural Association and the Earth Day Proclamation organized by the City of Grand Prairie and the County of Grand Prairie Environmental Services Departments. Great to see that partnership in hosting that, because obviously, if there's anything, any one thing that impacts all of us and knows no respect for municipal boundaries, it would be environmental matters. And certainly appreciate the collaboration that went into putting that event on. And with that, I will call our meeting adjourned.